Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our town Rhinebeck regular town board meeting of tonight, February 22, to order. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. Monday, February 29 will be the last day to pay your town and county taxes before you have a 2% penalty, which will start on March 1. And March 1 is your last day to file any exemptions with the assessors office, exemptions like STAR or veterans. So please call Donna at 876-4805 if you need to file. And if you can't get down the stairs, please see the clerks and they will have somebody come up to help you. And the last announcement I have is that on Saturday, March 5, from 12 to 2 here in Town Hall, we have our first kickoff for our Solarize Northern Duchess event. It's a great group of volunteers in the town of Rhinebeck and Red Hook and some other towns have banded together to help make getting solar power easy for our residents. So come and hear how you can apply and get funding and help. That's here on Saturday, the 5th, from noon until 2:00. And you can also go to solarizend.org. That's all I have. Does anybody else have anything? No? Okay. Let's start with the... I'd like to make a motion to approve the prior minutes of February 8, 2016, regular town board meeting. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Does anybody have any announcements? Oh, we did announcements. Committee reports? Liaison reports?
Committee, the open space and affordable housing committee is talking to a possible consultant to help the committee for applying for a grant. We have something, come back to the board for appropriation from the funds that we have for affordable housing. So that is moving along.
Great. Anybody else?
I met with the historical preservation committee today and they're working on formulating rules and regulations for establishing some kind of a system.
Great. Good. Good committee. Thank you. Anybody else? I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-062, summer recreation soccer camp. May I have a second?
Second.
We held this over at the last meeting because we didn't have an answer as to whether or not the 13 or 14 participants were per session or for the whole summary, it's per session. So is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-064, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, vouchers 242 through V295, 40 checks totaling $109,682.89. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Does this have the Weston and Sampson?
No, that's our capital abstracts. But I had a couple of questions, things I wanted to discuss on here. On here, we have the... We need new batteries for all of our ADA, you know, our cardiac machines. We have three of them. One of them is currently in their recycling transfer center. I would like to move it out of there to be a backup for either here or the pool because we no longer run it, we don't know if anybody's trained to use it there, and essentially we have a machine with a $300 battery. If that's all right with you guys. I'd just like to have it moved down here.
So it's still usable?
It will be once we get the new batteries, which we've just approved.
Where are the other?
Pool and here in Town Hall.
So you look at two in Town Hall?
We have a backup. Sometimes people ask to borrow them.
Yeah.
We need to have people trained to use them. It's sitting there, eat and out, or maybe we shouldn't buy a battery for it, we should take it out of use because that's not our facility anymore.
Maybe you could put it down in the highway garage.
They have one as well, I'm sorry. Yeah, they do. I'm sorry, they do.
Some of them.
I'm just going to get it back here and then we can think about it.
Get it back here, we can figure out what the situation is.
Secondly, just in looking, I was at the Association of Town, some other Town Hall staff member, we need to look at our travel policy again. We're paying people for train, driving, you know, the 107 miles one way and train tickets are $28 one. We should maybe come up with a policy that's the lesser of train travel or car.
Great. People are paying for parking, too?
Yes.
I think there's some parking on the one that was seven miles. There's no parking.
No, there wasn't. But my point is, if we can send somebody down for $56 round trip, why would we want to pay, you know, $120 for mileage?
Exactly.
That's my only comments about these. I didn't want to pull anything out. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-065, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, vouchers 212 through 241, 22 checks totaling $38,629.35. May I have a second?
Sure.
Fees are some more invoices from 2015. I just have, there's a reimbursement here for, from April of the last year for hotel to a planning board conference that wasn't bid for and wasn't approved, so I'd like to move to take that out, unless anybody knows.
Yeah, I said that we should put it on. It came in late, and the planning board, and it did go. We didn't have any policy of approving. There has been practice of not planning board for a person to always go to that. I didn't think it was fair not to.
Okay. Thanks for looking into it. I think we, again, you know, back to our policy, this just wasn't bid and nobody asked me to put any money in the budget. It wasn't budgeted for, so we just have to be mindful of that. We're getting down to pennies next year, we won't have an increase. I don't have any other questions. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-066, our capital projects abstracts, two checks for $2,058.50 and four checks for $14,765.11. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have two comments. One, the $1,800 check to active energy systems. I don't think this is a capital project. Our current policy says that we have to have a written RFP with bids. I don't know that we did that. And the $9,995 for the Weston and Sampson, I think we have to hold aside. I don't know where we are with our...
We're having a workshop in the next meeting to go through all the numbers because the deal was we were only going to pay this $10,000.
If we had contingency left, and we need to spend that contingency on fixing the field. I don't know where that money's going to come out. So I'd like to hold these two out or at least one of them, unless somebody has information.
I have to hold the $1,800 out as well because we need an RFP, but we do need a second bid.
Okay. I'd like to revise the motion on the floor to hold out...
What is that bill for?
It's for the roof.
A tin roof on the piers. I'll make an amendment to the motion to hold out the $1,800 to active energy systems and the $9,995 to the Weston and Sampson. May I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. And then we have the open motion on the floor to pay the rest of these vouchers. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. John, did you get that? Pulling back two checks, thank you. $9,995, yeah. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-067, our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion here? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-068, commencing the local law adoption process for local law to be decided of 2016 entitled, quote, "A Local Law Repealing Chapter 125-61 of the Rhinebeck Town Code." May I have a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
Joe, is this, you want to take us through this?
Yeah. In 2009, as part of the code, a section, I received a lot of section or article, was put in with green energy standards. My understanding, I'm speaking to some people who are involved in that process, it was really kind of a placeholder, and the provision provided that it would only take effect in three years. Those three years are over and each year we did a moratorium so we could further study it, see whether it's really appropriate for Rhinebeck. After study, we had a seminar for local builders and architects to really explore what this meant. And the provision provides that any new construction, residential and commercial, has to be a certain score on a scheme or program by a private association of builders. The cost of passing this test may be $4,000 or more for the...
For the homeowner.
Yeah, for the builder than a homeowner. And there are very few testers, so it's hard to get it tested. In the meantime, the state has revised its energy code and it is more, requires more energy efficient. So Alan and I have talked to a number of builders. I had a demonstration of what it would be. Based on that, I don't think that it should be adopted. One, I have brave doubts as to whether all the builders and I think, even though what it is, certainly, I don't think the code enforcement officer really can enforce it, these kinds of trading on the state requirements. And I don't think we can just keep having enforcement.
No.
I think we're at the point.
I agree. I brought it up with the, excuse me, the zoning review group, meeting with the chair of the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, our zoning enforcement officer, our Lynn, U.S. attorney, and I did ask them, Joe had me ask them, and everybody, two persons agreed that the state regulations for green building were sufficient and that people seemed to be naturally doing it, it was in their own best interest, and for us to have this, it was another layer of government that we couldn't enforce and would be burdensome to the homeowners. So I agree. I'm sorry, did you want to say? Yes, you did. Got any comments?
No, I agree with you. It's the right thing to do.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for doing all that.
So this sets a public hearing at our next meeting at 6:45.
So we'll have a public meeting, public hearing in our next meeting, so we have an open resolution here. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. And John, you'll notice for our public hearing, do we have to hold the public hearing open so we'll see who comes or...
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that, Joe. I'll make Resolution 2016-069, pool swim lessons, swim team, and camp prices for 2016 summer recreation program. May I have a motion and a second?
I move this. So moved.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Let me give you an explanation. So this year, the pool and camp program lost roughly $5,000 on the base of about $100,000. So, about five percent. So we're proposing some increases in price, which we think are, still keep our prices very low, but make up the $5,000 and actually provide another $10,000. So these changes on this resolution, which I'll go through in a moment, basically provide another $15,000 in revenue, given the same level of participation as last year. So the daily pool admission is no change. It's still $10 for a non-resident, five for a resident, students and seniors are four and eight, resident, non-resident, and after five, it's three and six.
Those three are the same?
Yeah, those are the same. Seasonal pool passes are an increase of $25. So the individual is 100, it was 75. It's 200 for non-resident, it was 175. Family is 200, I'm sorry, is 225, it's 400. It was 180 and 360. Senior over 62 was 20 and 50, it's now 50 and 80. Swim lessons, this is for a week of, I'm sorry, for a two-week session, is proposed to be 75 and 90, it's a $15 increase on both sides. Tiny tots is 75 and 90, that's a $15 increase as well. Swim team is 115 and 165, that's no change. For an individual, for family, it's 215 and 315, also no change. The camp goes to 100 and, now this is, I'm going to have to amend this because it's, the two numbers for the camp on the resolution you have are incorrect. We're saying we want to, and I'll move to amend this, to be 120 a week for individuals and residents and 190 a week for non-resident kids. The last part, the after camp numbers are distinct, $35 is $65 for family, 35 for an individual, or 55 per child for a non-resident. Those, this is going to be approved, it'll all be published in a month.
Why wouldn't we make the after care per individual and not do a family rate?
You could do that. This is what it's been. The camp season basically is a $20 increase from last year for residents and a $30 increase.
And Alice did a great job. You know, she called around every camp and pool and we still have one of the best deals.
Oh, yeah. My grandchildren have gone to commercial camps in this area.
Travel, easily, yeah.
In public.
Yeah, easily. Yeah.
Alan, what should this bring in?
This should bring in $15,000 more, so it'll cover the $5,000 loss, give us a $10,000 cushion. And keep in mind that the lifeguards and the councilors will be getting more money because of the minimum wage laws and because of the town more experienced and all that.
I would just like to see that the after camp, like the camp, is per individual, not a family price.
So...
We did away with family camp rates. We're charging per the individual. So if you have four kids, you have to pay per kid.
But, you know, season, pool pass, you still have family rates. You haven't done away with...
Not camp, Joe. Only camp, only camp.
I don't have a problem with that. So I move to amend this resolution to have the individual camp prices for residents be $120 a week and the individual camp price for non-residents to be $190 a week. And for after camp, to eliminate the $65 family rate.
I'll second that. All in favor of the amended resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Now we have to vote on the open resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Alan, and thanks, Alex. I know she did a lot of work on the, yes, to the rec committee, too. Thank you. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-070 for the purchase of a maintenance department. Mauer, may I have a second?
A second.
Thanks. I know, Joe, I know that Bobby bid this out and he's recommending Conway's a little bid. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. You're awarded to Conway's. Resolution 2016-071, disposal of the used AED unit. May I have a second? Anyone?
Yes.
Why don't you bring it to the floor and we can talk about it? Second?
Sure.
Thanks. Memo to the Rhinebeck Town Board from Bob Fitzpatrick. He's seeking permission to send the automated external defibrillator, the things that we just approved new batteries for, to the transfer station for recycling. It's no longer viable and the purchase price was over $100. One that we have is not viable and he wants to get rid of it.
And that's the one here in...
It's not any of the ones that we talked about. There's one in the highway department, there's one in the transfer center, there's one in the, in the pool, and there's one here. So this is another one.
Do we have to pay for this recycle?
I think we do.
You know...
Well, it depends on whether it's metal or...
I don't know.
It goes by any electronic equipment free to recycle.
Great. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-072, Town Hall use application by the Boy Scouts. May I have a second?
Second.
Again, is this different from what we approved last year? This is Trip 228, scouting for food. Didn't we approve this at our last meeting or these amended dates? Okay. We approved something before, unless this is another food drive, but this is the 2nd and 9th of August from 9 until noon. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-073, we have an application for Town Hall usage. May I have a second?
Second.
Frank Stoppenbach has requested to use the Town Hall for a live video stream showing the presidential primary debate on March 9 from 11:00, 8:00 p.m. until 11:30 p.m. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So you can come here and watch the debate.
Which one?
The Democratic debate. We have a couple of discussion items. I have some paper for you. Here you go. This is the first one, email. Some time ago, I found it in the spam folder, February, from a company that is working with the EPA, offering free assessments of landfills to determine if they're likely candidates for solar farms. Miners use this company, a couple of other towns on the other side of the river. This company is approved by the EPA and will give us a free looksee and a white paper, you know, study, and then we could use that to either go out and get bids or do with what we want to do with it. We can see funding grants or, you know, get a project to do a solar farm there. It seems like...
What's the name of the company?
It's right up here. It's a...
I couldn't find it.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have it right here.
What?
Do we want, do we want to do this?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
It might just be a...
I couldn't find it.
So basically, the vision of all this...
It's a feasibility study. It could just be an individual. Do we want to do it or not do it, or do we want to seek out other people?
Well, this is free, right?
This is free.
It's a good idea, if it's possible.
I'd say we ought to do it.
Report is designed to be read easily without a lot of technical jargon. Once you approve the report, we can publish it on the rev site so that interested developers can access the info and contact the town.
It's a free assessment, why not?
All right.
I think we should ask them to stay away from where we have all the methane coming out and that big pile of waste.
I guess we'd have Bobby meet them down there.
I would think they would know that.
Well, I hope so, but there's no harm in asking. Maybe Bobby should be there when they start. So maybe the permission is to let us know at times so we can have Bobby there.
Great. I have one other thing. It's discussion about Central Hudson meter in the shed at our stone church ref field. We got, I got a letter at the end of January from Central Hudson saying that we have a meter that we're paying a minimum of $35 a month for and we haven't had any electrical usage in at least eight months. And then I got the history of the usage back over that and we have no kilowatt usage. We had maybe 19 kilowatts used in August of 2013.
Don't they play ball there? Lights or anything?
They play ball there, but this is in the storage shed and so we're paying over $400 a year for a metering thing for electricity that we don't use. If people use it, it's not a town-sponsored sport. I think we should get in touch with the Little Leagues and offer them if they would like it to put it in their name or pay for it or shut it off.
Why don't we shut it off and let somebody come and tell us that?
No, my understanding is that Little League will come and offer to reimburse the town, maybe, I don't know how that would work if you put a meter in their, it's property. But at least I was told a guy who was heavily involved with Little League wants to come and talk about it. I was also told that the, there's a girls' baseball team that just used the electric for an automatic pitching machine. So yes, it's very Little League. used the electric for automatic pitching machine. So yes, it's very little usage, but there is some usage.
Since we're paying, yeah.
Little League will pay.
Yet they're not, my point is that they're not town-sponsored. It's going to get worse before it gets better. Next year, we have no money to, so I'm looking, yeah. So I'm going to put, give this to Alice and ask her to reach out to them and see what they'd like to do. All right?
Okay, several.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion items?
Just one thing. The, Bobby is, I gather, in Thompson Mezzarella Park, there's an eight-inch water line that was installed. He is going to finish running pipes from that eight-inch line to water fountains in the Little League field, I think in...
There's two, two. Little League and between...
I thought there were three, but whether...
There's one to the community garden and two on the other side.
So there's three. He also said that the, the water department said that they will be installing a meter at the beginning of the park to measure usage. One is just informing us. I don't know if that raises any issues. And I don't know if we pay the water bill for that.
We should look at our IMAs.
Is it split with the...
It's a joint project. Let's talk to Warren about it and look at the IMAs.
I don't know what that has to do with metering.
It's separate. This is yet another thing.
Yeah, I think it's separate, yeah.
The way you described it, it sounded like the meter.
Well, for me, I think maybe this is something I talked to Bobby as to what his understanding is. And maybe it's Roger Wallbank or whatever is the one that's walking out and installing the meter.
Okay. Thank you. I got a letter from our Assemblyman Cahill informing us that he had requested, are you guys still discussing?
Yeah, I just, I just said, I mean, I hope this is not a way for us, I hope we don't get a bill for the installation of the meter. I don't mind paying the meter.
Well, I don't know about that. I don't know what the custom is.
Unless it's a joint project. It's, we have an IMAs, so maybe the IMAs addresses costs. So let's look at that and let's talk to them.
I think Alan is raising something else. That's whether we split the cost. But I think Alan, you're raising whether we pay for the installation of the water meter. And I'm assuming there's a custom by the water department. I would be surprised if they...
They do charge for the installation of meters. We had to do it at the highway department.
Yeah, but this is a $60,000 dollar...
We paid for that. No, I don't think this is, but we need to find out. Bobby can't do anything until we talk to the water department and know what's going on.
Well, if Bobby is doing it, maybe Alan, you want to talk to Ms. Roger Wallbank?
I think we can get the, you know, the Thompson Mezzarella Park Committee can do it. You can do it. And we need to know what's going on. Thank you for that. I got a letter from Kevin Cahill letting us know. He actually copied me that he had requested a one and a half million dollars to be allocated to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority in the 2016-2017 state budget to cover the majority of the costs associated with replacing 4,800 feet of water mains in the town of Rhinebeck and the town of Hyde Park and in the hamlet of Stasburg. And he did ask for some additional money for the Vandenberg Co. sewer system in Rhinebeck and Hyde Park. So I'm going to call him and find out about this. Maybe if they get some of the money, we can pay for the metering out of that, you know, that the village was.
It doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't. And I'm not sure, you know, he didn't county the, copy the village on this. And it says in the town, not in the village. So it's great if we could get some money for infrastructure replacement, but let's see what it is. I'll follow up on this. Is there anything else? Is there anything, Alan, this short EAF, was this from you?
No.
Okay, I have a...
It's your corrections and the one that's in our book.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have anything else to bring to the board? Any items not on the agenda or is there any questions or comments from the public? If there are not, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters pertaining to collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the civil service law. May I have a second?
Bargaining.
Sorry?
Waiting.
We only have one collective bargaining unit. It's Teamsters at the highway department. Welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
We will go in for executive session. Thank you.